It is 6:30 PM on Tuesday, January 7th, and it is my distinct privilege to call this meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Eber?
Here.
Counselor Hohlen?
Here.
Counselor Wheel?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Sheldon?
Here.
Counselor Blum?
Here.
Counselor Maguire?
Happy to be here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Somebody's gotta carry the torch. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We will move on to audience participation. There is a sign up if there's anyone in the audience who wanted to take a moment to make any kind of comments about our retiring council members. So we'd invite you to sign up. Positive or negative, I guess. There is one name, Karen Fisher. Please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Karen Fisher, 6200 Charlestown Drive. Counselor Blum and Mayor Pro Tem Wheel, thank you for your time, professionalism, and advocacy for our wonderful community. And thank you both for your warm welcomes to me. Dan, on behalf of all of our neighbors, thank you for your exemplary service on this council for the past eight years. Your professional background in land use and real estate development has so often informed and contributed to discussions and decisions. However, your long commitment to volunteerism and your support across charities, other civic organizations, and HOAs shows that you informed these recommendations with heart. On a personal level, thank you for bringing me up to speed. I hope to serve District Five and this city as a whole with the same dedication and integrity that you have so clearly shown. I have big shoes to fill, but I look forward to bringing some new perspectives too to the table. And I also hope that now that you are term limited, you'll find even more time to enjoy your family, making memories as a family with your kids. Now that they are young adults is kind of one of the most fun stages yet. Take it from us. To all of you, your legacies will be remembered. Thanks again.
Thank you. Beautifully stated. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We'll move on to presentations and remarks for outgoing city council, and I will take the mayor's privilege of kicking off. Eight years. Wow. When it occurred to me that I've been on council for 12, eight of those have included these three members of council. That's a long time. That's somewhere around 176 meetings, give or take, a few that may have had some extras. It's eight years of seeing each of you every other week, talking to you sometimes more often. That's more than I see my extended family. It's more than even some of my friends. I didn't know any of you before you joined the council, but now I think of you as trusted colleagues and friends. We really made a good team. A team that built this new city hall, our public works facility, John Mead Park. When you were elected, you didn't miss a beat. You dove right in practically at the first meeting into the three biggest projects that this city has undertaken in the past 20 years. A team that recognized the omnipresent traffic challenges and conducted a citywide traffic study, revised the traffic calming policy, and installed a traffic signal at Glenmore thanks to Counselor Blum's dedicated efforts. A team that has seen the transfer of Quincy Farm to the city and shepherded that along a very long and often tumultuous path. A team that undertook thorough code modernization process under the leadership of Counselor Sheldon. A team that made progress toward undergrounding of utilities as outlined in the master plan, also spearheaded by Counselor Sheldon. A team that celebrated Cherry Hills Village's 75th anniversary. A team that hired a new city manager, then an old city manager, and then the new city manager again. A team that worked through COVID and came out better in the end by using that as an opportunity to increase transparency through streaming our council meetings. A team that brought Cherry Hills Village's sales tax code into the 21st century thanks to the Herculean efforts of Mayor Pro Tem Wheel. And a team brave enough to tackle the challenges of cellphone coverage that are yet to be resolved. But we didn't shy away from the challenge. And all the while, this team exercised extremely prudent fiscal oversight, leaving the city in a strong financial position to meet the needs of the community for years to come. Yes, we made a good team, and you all have left the city far better than when you found it. We've discussed trees, we've discussed fences, we've discussed traffic, we've discussed extreme hardship many, many times over the last eight years. We have some battle scars, the roundabout, legal battles over trails, some fights over Quincy Farm, various sets of angry neighbors. And all of that is just to say that it hasn't always been easy. It has required patience, diplomacy, deliberation, and all three of you are masters at those skills. Al, you always say I'm the only Republican you ever voted for. That might not really be true because I'm pretty sure you voted for some of these other people up here too, but I appreciate the sentiment. It's never been about politics here. It's always been about what's best for the city. And regardless of what is going on out there, I know that in here, we're all on the same team. I know Bonnie has served on the council, and now you, and do any of your children live in Cherry Hills Village that we can enlist into service?
Grandkids.
They'll do. Dan, I guess the silver lining is that now I get the title of the youngest person on council back. It was a source of pride for me, and it was quite a blow when I learned that I'm actually four months older than you. But I guess now I get that title back, which is a kind of sad statement. We need to recruit some younger people.
Dan looks a lot older than you.
You have an uncanny knack for diplomacy, an eloquent way of showing empathy even when you may not agree. And now that you've got an empty nest and you're getting a bunch of time back, I hope that you won't be a stranger. And Randy, the most thoughtful and reasonable person I know, you aren't always the loudest voice on council, but generally the wisest. I have appreciated the efforts that you have made on various ballot issues over the last eight years, a side of you that I never knew and have learned and grown to appreciate. Despite that you, all that you have battled in the past eight years, you gave this city everything you had every day. So no, it hasn't always been easy, but it has been fun. And you all have supported me over the last eight years, and I cannot express my appreciation for that. I hope that you know the feeling is mutual. I've enjoyed working with all of you and will miss you greatly. And with that, I will turn it over to the returning members of council to make any comments. So I'll start with Counselor Maguire.
Well, I should have known if there was someone else who was going to go back and look at all the old minutes, it would have been you, not just me.
Well, I did have a few that I left out, maybe.
Well, what struck me was that your first new item of business, when you all stepped onto council, was the approval of the sale leaseback for this building and the COPs. Seeing the city through the construction of this and the renovation of John Mead Park and Allen Houto Memorial Park, what a jewel of the city this has become. And I hope you all understand how much we appreciate that. That really was amazing. And then guiding the city through COVID, when so many cities had so much trouble. And I think operationally, organizationally, and financially, we came out of it pretty well, and that's thanks to your all's leadership. Al, your service eight years here and on P&amp;Z before that for three years. I had to laugh because in that same first meeting, in your comments at the end, as council goes around and makes their comments, your comment was, "I'm meeting next week with CDOT to talk to them about getting a light." So it only took you seven or eight years, but dang it, you got it done.
It started 18 years ago.
Even before that.
And Joe can attest to that.
I've really appreciated, first of all, being your seatmate here, but your, I think your counsel on real estate and finance and your kind of quiet, steady persona has, I've really appreciated you having that here. Dan, your leadership on the High Line Canal for all eight years while you were here, and then taking leadership for the issue of cell coverage in the city, which was an issue we needed to talk about. We needed to understand how people felt about it. And I think you got somewhat unfairly maligned during that process, but I appreciate your taking that burden on and seeing us to where we are on it. Sure you don't want to stay and continue to shoulder that burden?
Maybe volunteer.
Again, I've appreciated your calmness as we consider issues. Your real estate perspective has been so valuable. But my favorite thing that you have done on council, which has benefited my district, was undertaking, undertaking the initiative to get Swastika Acres renamed to Old Cherry Hills. It's something that should have been done a long time ago, and somebody just needed to take care of it, and you did. So I appreciate that. Randy, your service on Dr. Cog for all these years, bless your heart. I'm sure you're going to miss it. And also leading the private citizens initiative to pass ballot question 2A, which has made such a difference for the finances of the city. Thank you for that. It was a lot of work. And I think you had a good team around you, but you needed to lead it, and you got it done. So we appreciate that. And I think what I'm going to miss most is every, at the beginning of every council meeting, hearing you respond to the roll call with "happy to be here" because it reminds us all that it's a privilege for us to be here, and we ought to appreciate being able to do what we do to help make this a better place. So thank you for that.
Counselor Hohlen?
Amazed at how many of my comments, Katie talked about it in almost the same words, so I probably don't really need to even go into it.
But Dan, I'm going to. I would expect nothing less of you, Earl.
Exactly. And I'll stop by expressing my appreciation to Randy, Al, and Dan, you know, for your years of volunteer service to our community, but also to Karen, Doug, and Dave for their willingness to volunteer their time to serve as well. And as most everyone knows, our commissions, boards, and council members are all volunteers willing to give of their time and expertise to make Cherry Hills Village the special place that we all love to live. A community can only be as good as its citizens are willing to make it, and I very much appreciate the work of all of our city volunteers, and particularly Randy, Dan, and Al, who are leaving the council tonight. In that regard, I can only say what a pleasure it has been working with each of you, and not just for the last two years, but also for the two years we served together on my previous stint in council. Randy, from the very beginning of our work together, I have appreciated and admired the thoughtful and thorough way you approach each and every issue that comes before us. And you've done the same thing with your work and representation of the city at Dr. Cog. You've also provided leadership on two of the most consequential ballot issues to face our city in recent years, the sales tax issue and the Quincy Farm issue. Although I guess technically, you actually did that as a citizen, not really as a council, as a resident, as a resident. As I leave, as you leave council, I suspect you'll find a way to continue to serve the village. I wish you nothing but the best, and I look forward to seeing you as a continuing member of the Friday walking group. Dan, the thing that always stood out to me about your service on council was your sensitivity to residents' concerns. So many times after hearing from residents in a public hearing on an issue, you would express an observation or a sentiment about a resident's comment or concern, and I would think, geez, why didn't I say that? It was always remarkable to me, your sensitivity in that regard. Your work on the High Line Canal has been mentioned. We'll continue to pay dividends to our community as that vision unfolds. And your dedication to ensuring that the most recent section of undergrounding along Quincy Farms was terrific, even though it caused you a lot of frustration, I know, for how long that it took. And your leadership on trying to find a solution to the cellphone service issue in the village was much appreciated, even though that solution is still yet to be found. Thanks for leaving that in our hands. I wish you nothing but the best, but somehow I also too have the feeling that we haven't heard the last of Dan Sheldon in terms of service to the village. And Al, the thing I've not only enjoyed but really appreciated in our work together was how you embraced the notion of nonpartisan governing. As most probably know, our municipal elections are nonpartisan, and Al and I come from different sides of the political spectrum. But in any and every discussion we would have on an issue, I noticed that you and I were typically of the same mind as to how to solve a problem or take advantage of an opportunity. And I think that is because we approach those issues with a view of what is best for Cherry Hills Village and not wed to some ideology. I think our council as a whole always did this, at least in my experience. But for whatever reason, I tend to see you as sort of the poster boy for putting ideology aside and simply trying to figure out what is the best, most common sense solution for the community. If only our general assembly in Congress would take a page from your book, we'd be all better off. I also appreciate and thank you for your work as pliace liaison during the last two years in support of Chief Lyons, as he's implemented so many changes, which has really enhanced the efficacy and professionalism of the department. And I know the residents of Glenmore will be forever indebted to you for finally getting that traffic light installed at the Glenmore Bellevue intersection. Finally, thanks for your years of service to our village, not only on council but on P&amp;Z, as well as your wife Bonnie. No one can say that the Blum household hasn't done their part to make CHV what it is today. I wish you nothing but the best and look forward to that golf game that never seems to materialize. Again, thanks so much for your, you guys' service. I will truly miss working with all of you.
Don't you mean the Bloom family? We're just calling you Counselor Bloom.
Counselor Eber?
I don't know how I got started, but Counselor Bloom and I am now Counselor Bob. And so, you know, to the three of you, I wish you only the best. It has been absolutely a pleasure to work with all three of you. Much of what I planned to talk about has already been said. I, believe it or not, am not going to repeat it. I know that's a great moment.
We still have a half hour.
I still have a half hour. Well, in honor of you, Dan, I do have a few comments that should only take about 45 minutes. And I just have a couple of things that I want to talk about, but that really means only about six or eight things, not a couple of things. And so you have been patient. You, all three of you have been wonderful mentors for me in my first two years on council. I wanted to thank you for the leadership and the skills that you have shown me about being a good counselor to Cherry Hills Village in the two years. Obviously, before that, you, all three of you, had wonderful experiences here. You have led this village through what could be our most momentous shift in physical plan, thinking about how we finance things. I think, Earl, you also had a role in that as well. You're not retiring tonight, but I credit all of you for the idea of COPs as a viable finance tool, because it has been a wonderfully rewarding tool that has helped our village financially and set us into a situation where the village is in great financial shape, in large part because of the three of your actions. Thank you very, very much. To Al, your idea, you know, coming from a real estate development background really allows me to understand and I think puts forth an idea of what is good from a development standpoint from the ground up. Sitting right next to Dan, I think you guys are a great combination because, Dan, you do so much for the infrastructure below the surface that allows great development projects to then go for the next step up. The knowledge that you two brought has been The knowledge that you two brought has been invaluable to me and I think invaluable to the city. Both of you have been able to take many of the arrows that we take periodically on behalf of very concerned and very educated and very knowledgeable citizens that we represent. You, all three of you, fully understand the responsibilities of sitting here and working on behalf of Cherry Hills Village, and we are a better place because of all of you. Thank you very much. And Randy, last but not least, certainly, I think of the personal work that you have done on behalf of the village. I am tickled every meeting to come to see which one of the electric vehicles is parked out front, and I made a comment earlier that we're going to have to have you park the BMW out front so that we can all see the latest and greatest technology. But Police Chief Lyons had mentioned tonight that he has a new toy that might rival your car, but you've been a very important mentor to me in terms of the adherence to the master plan and the work specifically about greening city government. As you know, I was an environmental lawyer doing enforcement work for many years for the state of Colorado, and I hope to be able to fill one of your two shoes in hopes that I will eventually get to both of your shoes on the idea of greening Cherry Hills Government and being able to stand in that. I noticed from the mayor's potential committee assignments, I may step into your role on behalf of Dr. Cog. I am a neophyte in that world and will be calling you hourly for help on that if that in fact is where I get tasked, but your work through Poor Health and Rebound has been inspiring, frankly, to all of us. The ability to show up, stand up, and be a huge participant of the goings on of this city council for the last number of years has been amazing to me and inspiring to me, and I think frankly to all of us here on council. I spent ten years on Parks and Trails before this, and so all of the work in getting Mead Park to the stage that you all were able to work and finalize, to see that work come to fruition, the contracts let the work actually done, melding it into this beautiful building that we're sitting in today, Hutto Commons being integrated into it, that was some of the most magnificent work that the council has done in a long time. And I only hope that we can continue the legacy of the three of you, be as good as the three of you, and have as much fun as the three of you have brought to me on behalf of council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to invite the city manager to make some remarks.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I am going to, we have some parting gifts for our outgoing members, and so I'm just going to say a few things on behalf of myself and staff to each one of you as you come on down, so I can give you your parting gift. And then I'm going to ask that you stay down here afterwards so that we can take a group picture one last time, so that we have that for posterity's sake. So first up, Counselor Blum, I guess is what we're calling it now.
Is it Blum or Bloom?
Yeah, Bloom, sorry. You know, I think there's a lot of contributions and work that all three of these members have made. And, you know, for Al, everyone's familiar with a lot of the public facing contributions he's made, and everybody's talked about the traffic light, a lot of the work that you, I, it's famous at this point. I think we should rename it and put your plaque on it. But there's also loads of contributions that you make to this organization that aren't always obvious to the public. You know, Al helped select all of our vacant board seats. That is a thankless job that really helps set the table for a lot of the work that happens in this community. You know, Al sat on the panel to hire our commander. These kinds of things are thankless in the bigger picture, but have such a huge role. And you know, Al would often drop in to City Hall to say hi, to check in, to ask a question, and every time it happened, you left the building in a more elevated, happier, enlivened, energetic state. Is that not true, Stan? It really, your sense of humor, your overall outlook on how things were working is such an invaluable part of allowing us to keep moving forward. So for that, I'm sad to see you go. You'll be missed. Thank you so much. And this is for you. Thank you. You're welcome.
You don't have to stay right there, but...
Dan, as you all have heard tonight, for, from former, I didn't mean to put you out in the field so quickly, a developer, I got my start in the community development, which specifically was city planning, and I worked with or across from the table, from developers for my entire career, for years and years and years. And when I started out, there were a lot of huge contributions that Dan made throughout his time here that you all have heard about. When I started, he was actually helping wrap up a lot of good work on the code modernization, which makes sense given his background, our zoning code update, great project, huge, lot of work. You know, more recently, his real estate background was such an assist with the sale of Ninety Mead Lane. His guidance was instrumental in helping put the city in a better financial position through that whole process. But for me, Dan and I, you know, we could speak the same language, we could talk the same way, we understood shared pressure points in a particular conversation, we understood, we, we had the ability to speak together in a way that, no offense to everybody else, but that I, that we understood each other. And especially when I was starting out as a city manager, as a first time city manager, that was so helpful to me. So for that, I'm certainly appreciative, and that's going to be missed. And this is for you. Don't go up there. Randy, last but not least, I think that was said before. You know, when I started as community development director here at Cherry Hills Village, Randy provided a real steadying influence, a real steadying presence. And as you've heard tonight, and as you've seen no doubt from the audience, every comment, every phrase, every time he spoke, there was a sincere thoughtfulness. And he didn't speak the most, but boy, when he did speak up, you know, the old E.F. Hutton thing, right, everybody listened. And that's, that's because every time he spoke, we were all smarter for it. That changed, not the wisdom part. The steadying, the kind of calm, quiet presence, that changed. As Randy became more comfortable in his seat here, and he began to take the leadership reins in things like 2A and a lot of Quincy Farm ballot measures, too numerous to list, he became a tour de force. He found his feet, and he has such an enormous legacy on this community through, through really an evolution. That's the best part about it. And, you know, what started off in a certain role, in a certain way, blossomed into this really powerful presence on the council, still with a, with a quiet, steadying way, but the results were undeniable. And I and staff and the community are thankful for that contribution. Thank you. So we do need to take some pictures if the rest of the council would come on down.
make some parting remarks. Counselor Blum, Bloom, Blum.
Katie, thanks for calling on me first, because one mayor ago, he always called on me first, except for one time, but I appreciate being called first. First, I want, and you guys have been very gracious, and all the comments you guys have all made, we really appreciate from both the incoming or the existing members and the staff. So first of all, let me thank Bonnie, because she spent eight years on council and really served as a mentor for me. But there are also several other people, retired members, who have served as mentors. One was Laura Christman, who was the head of planning and zoning when I went on there, and then was mayor when I came on council, Mike Gallagher, who really taught me a lot, and Alex Brown, who's not here tonight, but Alex served the eight years between Bonnie and myself. Then let's go talk about staff. And Chris, let me say this, when Jim decided to leave, Dan and I looked each other in the eye and said, who is it going to be? And we knew then, didn't we, Dan, that you'd be the ideal person for this situation? And what a tremendous job you've done, even though you took a year off. I know Earl took four years off, but, took a year off, but it's been, it's been a real learning experience with you, and you've been just the top person that quantified everything that had to be done in this city, and we really appreciate that. You made it so easy for us up here on the dais to work with you, and like you said, I'd come in meetings and you'd have a very understanding of what was going on and what the issues were, and we really appreciate that. It's been a real pleasure working with the chief for the last two years. I mean, I don't know how people are aware of it, but the department has become top notch, I think, I think top and everywhere in the state for what you've done to bring it together. And on top of that, you've got an electric car now, which is something some people here probably want to borrow. Kathy, as we talked, you provided legal expertise, and we had a farmer mayor who I had to say, be the mayor, we've got legal expertise here, and even providing legal expertise to lawyers, which is hard to do. We really appreciate that. To Jay, we got the stoplight. Good job, Jay. Took eighteen years, but we did it. And to the rest of the staff, I really did not work that closely with you, but I want to thank all of you for all the work you've done. You've made our jobs up here so much easier that we've really enjoyed it. Let me go to the current council, I'll start with Rob at the other end. Rob, I remember one day when you and I were walking along the High Line Canal and you had your dogs, and you're talking about, I think you were on Parks and Trails then, and I said, you know, you've had so many years here in Parks and Trails and being a, really a first member, first generation, second generation in the city, something you ought to consider because of all the time you've spent with the city and all the background and information you've had. And I think that you really brought an expertise with your background as a lawyer, and really got details on the knowledge of the city and the workings of the city, and I really appreciate what you've done for the city and for me, having you as a council member. And I, I'll take full credit for talking you into coming on council. Randy, I think you proved to everybody, you're the hardest working member of council that we've ever seen, with all the stuff, and it's already been talked about tonight, the things you did, working with Dr. Cog and the elections and everything else, and so happy to see her happy and healthy, because I remember there was a times when I came visiting the hospital and things were not so good, and we really appreciate the fact that you are healthy now and have worked so hard on this, and I think the city is really appreciates all the work you put in for some of those major things. Karen, it's been a real pleasure sitting next to you.
Susan.
Susan.
That's all right.
Wrong name, wrong name. Why did I put Karen? Susan, because I think, you know, looking at all the various expertise here at council, your ability to concisely come down to bottom line, I think is fully appreciated. And a lot of times we get off on tangents and all kinds of things, but you're able at the end to put everything down to bottom line where we all understood it, we could all move forward, and it's been really a pleasure sitting here with you and watching you do that. We really appreciate that. Back to Katie. Katie, we're so glad you're our mayor, and I can't tell you, after going through some tough times with another mayor, you've really turned things around. The city is going in the right direction with everything you've done, and the other thing you've done is really bring a cohesive, cohesive council to work together to accomplish everything. I think there's been one or two times where there's been some distension, but always you were able to focus it and get it to something where the city and the citizen would approve that. Dan, Dan, you've been like a younger brother to me. We knew your parents and your brother long before we knew you, and I remember sitting there before we came on council, we were sitting at a meeting, talking about things and knew how much we had in common with, and it's already been talked about, as a land developer and us going vertical. I think we really appreciated both of our expertise and it came out in a lot of things. The thing that I really remember is, and it's somewhat sad for you too, but I remember sitting when we got sworn in eight years ago, both your parents sitting there that we knew before I knew you, and I know how tough that's been for you. We did accomplish a lot, and as Susan said, getting Swastika Acres out of our city, and it became, I don't know how many people are aware of it, but made the national news when they talked about that. And you took the lead on that, we worked together, and I remember I told one citizen, I said, can I put a sign up to run for mayor, or run for council? They said, give me one thing, promise to get me a Swastika Acres, and Dan, I think you really did, took the lead, got that done. As you can tell, I saved the last for the end. As people are aware, Earl and I come from opposite spectrums of the political situation, and we put all those aside, but I want to tell a little story about Earl. When I was on planning zoning, myself and another planning and zoning commissioner came in trying to help one of our neighbors in Glenmore to get a variance at a Board of Adjustment meeting. I think, Earl, you were the chairman then, and you turned us down, and we walked out of there and said, Earl, how could I ever get along with Earl? But I've learned, I respect the hell out of you, we've grown to really accomplish a lot of things together, but the thing that stands out the most is when Katie brought up the October 7th and said, let me make a few comments, and brought it up and just talked about it, because it was, I think it was the day before, it was October 8th, I think, was our city council meeting. Earl calls me up at eight o'clock the next morning and said, we appreciate what we did, but we did not do enough for that. And he said, I drafted a resolution, which was a great resolution. In fact, I have a copy of it here tonight, if anybody wants to see it. And I said, he said, let's put it in the next meeting. I read the resolution, it was a resolution against hate and what had happened on October 7th, and I said, let's call a special meeting, and that's the only time I think I've ever seen a special meeting called. We got a quorum here that Friday, you introduced the resolution, I think we're the first, and maybe Friday, now, if there are other cities that had done that, we may have been the only city that, there's a resolution against Hamas and hate, and it was just very, very well done, and I respect the hell out of you for that, and I think it's something the city will continue to value you going forward. So I was going to talk about accomplishments, but I think, Katie, you stole the thunder there. You talked about all the accomplishments that happened while we were here. To the new members, you're coming on with a very cohesive council, and there's some challenges remaining, which are, the least of which, traffic and cell coverage is that we can all attest to. So you do come aboard at a time where there are major issues still to be resolved in the city, and you come into a very cohesive council, and I want to welcome each of you here. Finally, I want to say it's been a real pleasure to represent the city and work with the constituents and members here. One funny story... One funny story, and then I'll, I don't want to be like Rob and go on. The, it was in the first month or two, some issue came up, and I got a call from a resident who said, "If you don't vote my way on this, I'm going to start a recall election." And I said, "Okay, bring it over, I'll be the first one to sign the petition." Never heard from him again, but that's something you may have to deal with. I think for Dan, Randy, and I, I think we've done the best we could for the city. And I'll close it by saying, as Mark Twain said, "Always do right, it will gratify some people and astonish the rest." And then I want to say, Al. Thank you.
You didn't have a microphone?
The pen is just as.
I asked for a microphone, but.
Thank you for that. Counselor Sheldon.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to start with a very quick, personal note, a tribute to my mom. She passed a few days ago, and as Al had said, eight years ago, when I got sworn in, my mom and dad were both here, old City Hall, but here, present with us. And I've since lost them both, and my mom had planned on being here tonight, as of a month ago. And as she got more sick, she couldn't make it, but I just wanted to say to my mom that, sorry, shouldn't have done this, but anyway, I wanted to, I just wanted to pay tribute to my mom and tell her that I miss her. I wish she could have been here to see this outgoing meeting. Anyway, on to my formal remarks. I'd like to start by saying what a privilege it's been to serve on this council and to serve our citizens for the past eight years. I've appreciated my time here, learning from staff and learning from council and learning from our citizens and learning from past councils and past mayors. I'd also like to say to my family, my wife Katie and Lily, who are here with us tonight, thank you very much for being supportive of me for the past eight years while I've been away for a couple nights, a month, and many hours during the off times where I'm not in the council meetings. Thank you, and thank you to my son, Jack, who's not with us here today because he's off abroad studying in Europe. I appreciate all your support over the years. I am proud of the things that we've accomplished during my time on council. I won't go into the particulars either, because I think they've been said, but I do believe we've made a positive difference in our community. To Catherine, Laura, Emily, and Jay, and the rest of staff, thank you for everything you have all done. It helps make the operation of the city, you make the operation of the city smooth, and for that, I thank you. To community director, community development director, Workman, thank you for your time spent with me, and as your liaison to council, I have really enjoyed our time together, and as Chris had mentioned in his remarks to me, we speak the same language, just like you and I speak the same language, Chris. Paul and I have that same language, as I'm sure the two of you have that same language because of our backgrounds. It's been a real pleasure working with you. Chief Lyons and Brennan, thank you to the police department for everything you've done for the city and bringing us a safer place to go home to every night. We, I, for one, and my family appreciate the work you've done here. City Attorney Guckenberger, thank you for keeping us out of trouble. I appreciate that and taking my calls and providing us sound advice on a regular basis. Good luck with the next round of hooligans that you've got up here. City manager Kramer, it's been a real pleasure to know you for the last eight years. And although we never really worked together in my time working in Commerce City, I know, I knew of you at that, during those years, prior to you coming here, and heard nothing but bad things about you there. I'm sorry, good things about you there. Typo, sorry about that. I feel like you've always been open-minded with new ideas and brought fresh ideas to the city and to council. Your leadership, not only with staff but with council, has been a real breath of fresh air for us. So I'm eager to see what you and the next council do. Thank you. To Al and Randy, it's been a wild ride. It's been fun, eight years. I appreciate your critical thinking and your willingness to always discuss city issues with me, even when we haven't always necessarily agreed on things. I don't know what you two both have planned for your Tuesday nights on the first and third Tuesdays, but if you ever want to go grab a beer, I'm available, at least until I get tapped for the next, the next thing, which might be the first and third Tuesday nights. To Rob and Susan, working with you two has been great. It really has, and I could always count on you to make sure that the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed and reading the documents, certainly more closely than I have, but I wish you luck the rest of the way. To Earl, it was great serving on council with you for a few years early on, and then these last couple of years. When you did leave the first time, it got a lot quieter and a lot shorter in our meetings. I thank you for that. Leaving, of course. Now that you've been back, they've been extended a little because of you and your partner in crime to your right, but thank you nonetheless. I think you're an incredible asset to the community, and I wish you luck moving forward. Mayor Brown, it's been an honor to serve the citizens of the village with you. Your wisdom and vision for the city has been truly remarkable. I am eager to see what you and the new council get accomplished in the years to come. You and I have discussed how difficult it is for a mayor to serve three terms, whether by choice or because you get, somebody else gets elected. I have all the confidence in the world that you will, if you seek a third term, will make it. You've done it twice now, and I have no reason to believe you won't do it a third time. Good luck, let's stay in touch. To Doug and David, I wish you both good luck in your upcoming terms, and I look forward to seeing what you do for the city moving forward. And finally, to Karen Fisher, I can't thank you enough for the enthusiasm that you've shown and your willingness to serve the city. The citizens of District 5 and throughout the city have no idea how lucky they are to have you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for some context, I know Lily, you're in college now. I remember a conversation, I don't remember what it was about, but we were having, and Lily was getting, had her driver's permit, and she was learning to drive on the interstate. And so in the middle of the conversation, it was like, "Hold on, hold on, okay, merge, speed up, speed up, and now put your signal on." I totally remember that conversation. And now, having a daughter who's gone through that myself, I really, you should have just told me to call you back. All right, Mayor Pro Tim Wheel.
Thank you, Katie. Well, let me echo the comments. I mean, most of my peers have taken all my good comments, but let me echo the honor and the gratitude that I have for the opportunity to serve the city. It's been a great ride, and I think we've accomplished a lot of good things. I'm not going to spend too much time rehashing that. Although I would like to add my comments, Al, to the 18-year crescendo that resulted in the, what I affectionately think of as the Al Blum Not Yet Memorial Traffic Signal. And I'm grateful, and I'm grateful for that, because that enabled, changed the traffic flow on Bellevue, and that enabled the Randy Wheel Not Yet Memorial Turnpocket. Turnpocket. So we've had some fun. And Dan, I am a significantly better reader after those 500-page packets of building code, building code revisions that we waded through multiple occasions. But, but it was, it was fun, and it's been a great team. Staff, I've had the good fortune to work with many teams over the course of, what, about a 45-year career, maybe a little longer, who knows? But you guys are among the best. I mean, really are. The level of professionalism and knowing your craft in each of your roles, the collaboration, the teamwork, the effort, the professionalism. I mean, it's like you can just tick the boxes. The finest people I've had the good occasion to, to work with, and you've kept us out of trouble, and you've kept us informed, and you make it pretty easy to be on the city I'd like to thank the voters and the residents. They entrusted us with a responsibility that I think we all take very personally and to heart, and my dealings with the residents have been all, you know, civil, thoughtful. It's, it's an impressive constituency that we have, and, and I think it's worth, worth recognizing, worth recognizing that as well. On a, on a more personal note, six years ago today, I was on my back in an ICU, part of my 64-day journey in intensive care, about as close to being dead as one can get and still be able to talk about it. The council kept my seat open for five months, because there was a whole bunch of rehab after the ICU adventure, and every member of the council, including the mayor, made at least one trip down to UC Health and paid a visit, and even though I was in a coma a good portion of the time, I actually remember all of that and am grateful. I thank them individually for that and want to take the opportunity to thank them publicly. It's been a great team. Unlike what you see in most political arenas, we are not partisan, as, as many have mentioned. One focus, what's the best thing for the greatest number of residents for the city over the long haul? And it has been an honor and a privilege to be a part of this team. Finally, I want to thank my wife, Susan, who's sitting back there. Katie was more precise. I had missed about 200 Tuesdays, Tuesday evenings over the course of the eight years, and maybe another 100 on Dr. Cog and miscellaneous other things. But, you know, my family was always supportive and I think recognized the opportunity to serve the community as a privilege, and so I'm grateful for that. To the new council, I think we left the city in good shape. I mean, financially, we've, there were a lot of things that have improved over the course of eight years, and, and so I think you're getting, you're not getting something that's a fixer-upper, you know? And yet, at the same time, there are still many challenges ahead, and I look forward to seeing what you all are going to do. And I, and I should also be careful to say, it is not this council, there have been 80 years, almost 80 years, of councils and mayors that made this city what it is today, and I was, I'm honored and privileged to be a part of that. And also, I'm expecting an invitation to the 80th anniversary festivities when those, when those happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Counselor Blum.
I forgot to mention it, this city would not exist, and it revolves around our city clerk, who was absolutely the best in the city, and we all need to acknowledge you, Laura, and I think he deserves a round of applause.
Well, thank you, and with that acknowledgement, that concludes our meeting, and so I will adjourn the last, oh, yes, you have it coming?
Can I, can I make the motion to adjourn?
No, not, no. Yeah, we did that already. Sorry, yes, you can make it, yeah.
Move to adjourn.
At 7:25, we stand adjourned.
Good morning, Mayor.
See you on the 3rd.
Now we don't violate the.
We don't have to open meetings, absolutely. It's a pleasure. Absolute pleasure. And I will be between dreaming and going to.
Come on. Come on.
Do we stay up here? Do we go below now? Or what do we?
I think you have to go down.
Because they're going to swear in.
Oh, okay. They swear at them, and or do we swear everybody into the next term?
Uh, I guess everybody.
No, just our new guys. And Katie, because it's our turn.
Can we step off?
Yeah, you, you're already swearing in.
We're swearing in.
People are swearing at us.
Exactly.
No, it's been a good day.
Well, I'd say that my marching orders this next two years.
A lot of theories.
It's good to have a lot of mine.
The only way I think we can do that is if we have a lot.
Yeah.
You wish.
You wish.
Well, not to care.
Not here.
You can see it a lot.
Okay.
Jay, I will be.
Sir.
Thanks for your service.
Hey, will you guys please, please, if they would, just.
Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service. Hey, will you guys, please, please, if they would, please, just? Okay. Jay, I will be served. Thanks for your service.
Charter and ordinances of the city of Cherry Hills Village.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Cherry Hills Village.
And shall faithfully perform to the best of my abilities.
And shall faithfully perform to the best of my abilities.
The duties of the office of council member upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties of the office of council member upon which I'm about to enter.
They stand there together with everybody looking up.
All right, sorry, so if you want to guys, look at that picture, just the new council.
Oh.
Sorry, up, down, up, down. What's the photos?
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Okay. It is my privilege to officially call to order the organizational meeting of the new city council at 7:43 PM. Welcome to all of our new members. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Counselor Heller.
Present.
Counselor Eber.
Here.
Counselor Holan.
Here.
Counselor McGuire.
Happy to be here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
And Counselor Fisher.
Here.
And that just brings up a quick point of information that there's a little talk button on your microphone. So whenever you speak, you can, you see it's the button on the right, that's off. And when the little red ring is on, it's on. And that helps us with both the live streaming and with the record keeping for the recordings of the meetings. The first order of business of the new council is the appointment of a mayor pro tem. The mayor pro tem in Cherry Hills Village is elected by the council members, which is you all, not the mayor. Because as you might recall, the mayor doesn't vote except in the case of a tie. Is there anyone who would like to make any nominations for consideration for mayor pro tem?
Madam Mayor, it's my pleasure to nominate to have Counselor Earl Holan as our mayor pro tem.
Second.
There's a nomination and a second. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of electing Counselor Holan as mayor pro tem. Turn on your microphones and all signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Counselor Holan, congratulations on your election as mayor pro tem. Again.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I appreciate your confidence.
Thank you. Okay. Audience participation. Thank you. There's no one signed up. Any reports from members of boards of city, city boards or commissions? I don't see anyone present. Moving on to the consent agenda for the benefit of the new council members. Anyone can move the consent agenda, but generally speaking, the mayor pro tem does that.
Did you say removal? Does anybody want to remove?
Oh, well, the approval. It's like you move to approve.
I move approval of consent agenda items 14A, B, C, and D.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. There were no items removed from the consent agenda. There's no unfinished business. For new business, Resolution Three, Series 2025, accepting a donation from the Cherry Hills Land Preserve for the renovation of the Big Barn at Quincy Farm. Manager Black.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. For everyone's benefit, a little bit of background before we get into the donation. So this donation is for the Big Barn rehabilitation at Quincy Farm, which is one of the main projects that was identified in last year's annual plan for the farm. So that plan included $760,000 for this project. $150,000 of that would be fundraised by the Cherry Hills Land Preserve as part of that plan. So last year in October, council approved Resolution 23, Series 2024, which approved $125,000 of that $150,000 donation. So today, the Big Barn rehabilitation is currently underway, and the land preserve has fundraised the remaining $25,000 of their donation. So they submitted the Quincy Farm donor recognition application to us, to staff in December. The donation is going to be made in two installments. An $18,000 installment this January and then a $7,000 installment in December. Placks recognizing the donors will be installed in the barn once construction is complete, and that list of names is included in the packet in one of the attachments. So the $25,000 donation will be used towards the remaining cost of the barn rehabilitation project. $670,000 for that project has been included in the 2025 budget. I'm happy to answer any questions about the donation, and otherwise I also have the motion available for you.
So entertain. Are there any questions for staff?
One question I had. Go back a slide to the... So is the $25,000 donation offsetting the $670,000, or they'll both be spent in total?
It's offsetting the $670,000.
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Robinson.
Is the $670,000, is that the total amount of the project? And is that going to be completed in what timeframe?
Sure. The total amount of the project, council has approved up to $829,000 total for the project. That's including the contingency, which hopefully we won't be spending that entire amount. Right now, the approved work that the contractor is doing, including change orders, is $764,000. And, sorry, and the timeframe is for it to be completed this spring. We're anticipating having a ribbon cutting in April.
Any other questions? Seeing none. So as you'll notice, on the, generally the way these come, there's always a staff memorandum. And on the, some of the last items of the staff memorandum is a recommended motion. That's recommended by staff. It's also shown on your screen here now. That isn't a motion you have to make, but if anyone feels so inclined and would like to make the recommended motion, I would entertain that now.
Sorry. I move to approve Resolution Three, Series 2025, a resolution of the city council of the city of Cherry Hills Village, accepting a donation from the Cherry Hills Land Preserve for the renovation of the Big Barn at Quincy Farm.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much to the Cherry Hills Land Preserve for their very generous fundraising and contributions and support of Quincy Farm and that project. The next item is city council liaison assignments. Our policies call for city council members to serve as liaisons between both city departments and outside agencies. As a liaison to a city department, the responsibility is to represent the council, not necessarily just an individual council member's perspective, but to provide the perspective of the entire council to that particular department. So for example, the finance liaison will work actively with the finance director in the development of the budget and will represent any questions or concerns that that council member knows other people on council might have. And then with outside agencies, it's a similar responsibility. Those have additional meetings, and we can talk about, if you have questions about the commitments of those, we can talk about their meeting schedules. But again, you're representing the city's position in those roles and not necessarily acting as an individual. You'll see on your screen the previous assignments and then some... Oh, do we have the proposed assignments? That's blank there. Okay, thank you. While we're bringing those up, again, the city council liaisons are appointed by the council. And there, I have made some suggestions, but they are only suggestions. The mayor doesn't appoint those positions. So those, hopefully we'll get those suggestions up. Well, I don't know them by heart, but I think everybody needs to be, yeah, but everybody needs to be able to see them, I think. Okay, there we go. Thank you. Little bit of an eye chart, but... There we go. So I don't know that we need to necessarily read through all of them. I just wanted to say that these are my suggestions based upon preferences that people have expressed. It really isn't rocket science. I didn't, you know, say, well, this person has this background. You're all council members. We're all equal representatives of the community. And so it's not, there's really no method to it. But these are the suggestions that I have. Does anyone have questions? Do you have concerns about where you see your name? Counselor Robinson.
I have a question. I'm just not familiar with the Centennial Airport Noise Roundtable. That's the one I'm not familiar with.
Sure.
Could you just provide some information about that?
I'm happy to, but I'll let Counselor Eber, who's the current liaison, if you wanted to just provide a little information about that.
Sure. The Centennial Airport has gone through a massive expansion at the same time that Southeast Denver has obviously grown. With that, it involves an awful lot of noise issues and more recently, environmental issues related to the operation of the airport. Specifically, the noise concerns center mostly around the aircraft flying schools that are lower and doing circles over many areas of Greenwood Village. Their flight path generally does not extend into areas over Cherry Hills Village. But prior to me, I think Mayor Brown was on, in this role, and it is designed mostly to keep abreast of all of the noise issues, all of the pollution issues that are associated with the operation of the airport. I think in the last four years, well, the last two years for sure, I believe there's only been one noise complaint from the village of Cherry Hills. And it's mostly in the area of monitoring at this point on behalf of the village to see whether or not additional concerns come back onto the plate that could affect us. I believe, Mayor, when you were on this, it was the time that the FAA redid the routes in and out of Denver International Airport, and there were a lot more flights coming in and over Cherry Hills Village. At that point, it was much more involved and active on behalf of the village. But right now, it's, it's more of a monitor position for right now.
And it's one meeting a month?
One meeting per month. It's usually the first week of every month. I believe it's Wednesday. Starts at seven o'clock, usually goes till about 8:30. They print their agenda and materials in advance for review. The most active participants, again, Foxfield, Greenwood Village, Arapahoe County, unincorporated Arapahoe County because of the area just north of the airport, Douglas County. Some of the flight schools are increasingly moving further east and south. So the city of Leveres, Fox, Oxfield, has been a little bit more active. But I generally have reviewed the materials and then generally I'm not very active during the meeting.
I think the reality is that the FAA controls that, and there really isn't a lot that can be done. But prior to Cherry Hills Village being part of the Noise Roundtable, there were changes made to the flight paths at Centennial Airport, and we were not involved at the time, and that did direct some flight traffic over Cherry Hills. And we kind of realized at that point that we weren't there, we didn't know anything about it because we weren't there. And then the flight paths have since changed again. And now, most of the parts of the city that experience aircraft noise are my part of the city. And it's mostly now from DIA more than it is from Centennial. But to Counselor Eber's point about monitoring, when changes are made, we would certainly like to know about it and to be able to evaluate whether or not there will be impacts to our community.
I would say that the biggest additional change that's going on is the pollution impacts were never
Yeah.
part of this round table before. And there is a major push to try and change general aviation aircraft fuels from being leaded, which is still permitted in the industry, to unleaded fuels. And there are different monitoring stations around the, I guess I would say, the airport impact area. And they have been finding that elevated lead levels do exist, and there are a number of schools within this area of impact that are very concerned, obviously, about lead levels. So that is always one of the key components of the meeting discussions.
Okay. Any other questions? Do people have any concerns? If not, I would, I guess what I would like to do is I'd entertain a motion to approve these appointments first. And then I do have one other thing that I wanted to bring up.
I move to approve the city council liaison assignments as attached to the January 7, 2025 staff memorandum.
It actually isn't attached to the, yeah, as reflected on the screen. Okay.
And second?
It's moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Those appointments have been made. I would also like to, so the liaison assignments are defined in our policies. And I would like to ask for consideration of the addition of an additional, the addition of an additional liaison position for Quincy Farm. We've had, the history of Quincy Farm has been very long. We've had various committees, citizen committees, partnerships. Quincy Farm is at a very developmental phase right now, and it's currently led by city staff in partnership with the Cherry Hills Land Preserve. But it is important, I think where the Quincy Farm process has gotten off track in the past is that there hasn't been enough input from the council level. So committees or groups of people would proceed down a path for some period of time only to find out that that wasn't the path that the city council agreed with. And so there were several stops and starts and sort of iterations around that. And I think that at this particular time, it would be very beneficial to have a council perspective represented in the meetings between city staff and the Cherry Hills Land Preserve, just to make sure that, that those groups are working in a direction that would ultimately be supported by council. Counselor Holan has been serving in that capacity sort of unofficially because it isn't an official liaison position. So I would like to propose that we amend our policies to add a liaison to Quincy Farm and that we appoint Counselor Holan to that position. And then further, as the alternate, I would love to serve in that capacity just given my extensive history with Quincy Farm.
I have some questions.
Yes.
First of all, I guess my question is, is this the right process for amending this policy? That's question one. Question two is, I know our other liaison, for example, liaison to Parks and Trails doesn't go to the Parks and Trails meetings. And I thought that the purpose for that was because we did not want them overly influenced by a particular member of council. Am I misunderstanding that?
So that's a little bit different. We used to have liaisons for boards and commissions. And we no longer have those because we didn't want city council to effectively sway the votes of those boards and commissions. Quincy Farm isn't a board or a commission. It's a, it's a staff sort of, it's not even a staff department. But it's staff working with the Cherry Hills Land Preserve. And staff, department liaisons do attend meetings with department members on occasion.
So why wouldn't the Parks and Trails, since this is an asset under Parks and Trails?
But it's not. That, it's a great question, but that's, that's exactly it. It's not under Parks and Trails.
What's it under?
Nothing.
The standalone project, it is by definition not a park. For, in the code, it is not a park.
And Parks and Trails, yeah.
With the exception only that it is deemed to be a park for purposes of selling or leasing more than five years.
Only that it's specifically called that.
It's included, but otherwise you're...
Absolutely right.
But Parks Trails, the Parks Trails and Recreation Commission, so when, when...
I understand it's not, yeah. We're not talking about the commission.
Right, but Quincy Farm, nothing related to Quincy Farm goes through the Parks Trails and Recreation Commission.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But it is managed in the Parks and Trails.
Department.
Department, under Emily, under Director Black. Is that right?
Yes.
And we've got someone who is, I'm not understanding why we're, if we've already got someone who, if it's managed in that section and we've already got someone who's assigned to that, I'm not clear why we're, what the rationale is for stripping it out and handling it separately. I realize it's a big asset. We've got a lot of big assets. I mean, but, so I don't understand that.
Well, I think from my perspective, it's because, and by the way, it's been discussed in the past, even going back when I was on council the first time, the discussion whether Quincy Farm should be part of Parks and Trails. And that, that's still something that could happen in the future. I don't think that's the right thing to do right now. I really don't think. I think it's a possibility to talk about. It's not something you'd want to do right now in particular because it's not a park. That's number one. Number two, I, I see where you're coming from, which is to go, hey, well, why wouldn't we just have the Parks and Trails liaison be also the Quincy Farm liaison? I'd still say there should be a Quincy Farm liaison. But in this case, and I'm going to have to put all humility aside, that's the reason I was the unofficial one. I've spent a lot of time with regard to Quincy Farms. I was on the, on the land preserve board. I mean, I've got a particular knowledge at this point in time, and that's why I think I'm probably the best one to do this. You have, might have a different view of it, but that's why. So the point is, is you're absolutely right. You could have Quincy Farm liaison, Parks Trails liaison, and they're the same person, but they are two different roles. In this particular case, though, you know, I wish somebody else would have said it, but I'm saying it. I think that probably I'm in the best position to be able to do it in terms of my knowledge associated with Quincy Farms.
And I would, I would add to that, that I also see your perspective. Where I see the difference is that Parks and Trails is one thing. Right now, because Quincy Farm is in a very intensive phase of its development, it is its own thing. It happens to be managed by the same staff people because we don't have lots of extra staff people to have a specific Quincy Farm department. But right now, those two things, there is not overlap in those two things. It's managed by the same staff people.
There's a tremendous amount of overlap in managing Quincy Farm and managing, say, John Mead Park.
I don't think so. I think Quincy Farm has, in terms of deter, we know what the uses of John Mead Park are. We know what it's going to be used for. We know what its intent and purpose is. Quincy Farm is in a very... Sensitive and very sort of, we're still figuring a lot of that stuff out. And I think that it needs, it's a different focus and the, you know, is it, are we going to hold events there? Does it need to be self-sustaining? Does it need to have a business plan? None of that is relevant to John Mead Park. The only overlap is that the lawn has to be mowed, and it's the same crew that, you know, maintains John Mead Park, that maintains Quincy Farm, and it happens to be the same staff person, you know, who oversees that. But the needs of Quincy Farm are very different from the needs of, you know, Volunteer Park, which is just a vacant lot.
I agree that there are additional needs at Quincy Farms. I think there are also a lot of needs that overlap. The maintaining of the property, for example, the trees, the irrigation. There are a lot of things that overlap. I agree there are separate issues, certainly the relationship with the land preserve. But I, I don't see why that, if what you're saying maybe is that you want to be the Parks and Trails. See, I'm not sure that it should be stripped out.
Well, in fact, I'd, I'd say, because in fact, not that anybody else couldn't do it and not that, because I've, for decades have always said, hey, you've got to have the ability to pull on one hat and put on another, and you've got to be able to step outside and do that correctly. But that's what's necessary. We don't want there to be a similarity with regard to looking at our Parks and Trails in the same way we do with Quincy Farms. It is a separate thing. The difference in issues with regard to the sensitivity with the neighbors, with regard to the oversight of a third party, with regard to the fact that we're still in the process of trying to figure out what are we, we as a city, we as a council, we haven't even approved, talked about a vision yet. We say we have to do that. Where is that going to go? How are we going to move? And then the relationship with Cherry Hills Land Preserve. It is so different than anything else that we have.
But what concerns me on that part of it, Earl, and, and I have a long history with, with the farm too. I know you do. I know Rob does. What concerns me about that is our model here is that operations are handled at the staff level.
Right.
And then decisions are brought to us. And it doesn't sound to me like you're talking about the same type of, like I meet once a quarter with community development to go over status. It sounds like you're wanting to get much more involved into the operational piece of it, which I don't think is appropriate for us as a council. Now, are you saying perhaps Quincy Farm issues should be coming to the council more frequently so that they make sure they're going the way? I mean, that's why I was saying we needed, we needed a more flushed out plan at the last meeting.
Right.
That plan just didn't seem substantial enough to me. But I don't think you should be sitting next to Emily driving, no, no, this isn't where we want to go. We want to go here. I think that's staff's role with, with city manager's oversight, and then it comes to us. I think we're overstepping our bounds.
Well, I, I see what you're saying, and you're right. I mean, and there has to be a sensitivity, and you're right. You wouldn't want somebody sitting in Emily's office saying, hey, do this. But with regard to those broad discussions that occur as between the land preserves, which, and you raised them yourself, that relationship is still evolving at this point in time. And the point is, is that, I'll just, from, from the meetings from time to time that I've attended, providing the perspective of where council was going to be coming from had an impact on staff and on the land preserve. Which is important because the point is, is you don't want those two bodies going off in a direction saying at the end of the day, and council goes, which we've done actually, and going, hold it. We don't want to do that.
To clarify, you mean when you sat in on the meetings, when you were on the board of the land preserve, not as a sitting city council person?
Yes.
Right. Although in my unofficial capacity, as, as the unofficial, I have... Right. Although, in my unofficial capacity, as, as the unofficial, I have participated in, on occasion, some of, some of those meetings. And then in addition, fortunately, hopefully, we don't have any more of that, but when we were really, you know, when we were looking at potentially having a legal issue with, you know, that was a lot of input and discussion that went on at that point in time to make sure we were, which then, and again, you could do it too, you know, a legal background associated with that. I mean, there's just, Quincy Farms is just such a different animal than anything that we've got in a, in a sensitive period of time. And we're making great progress. I, I don't know. I, I just, I really see, and like I said, irrespective of whoever it is, I see those roles as different. Whoever it is, that's the Quincy Farm liaison, it's a different perspective. And by the way, liaisons have different aspects. I meet way more often with Doug Farman as the, as the financial liaison than once a quarter.
Well, and when we did the code modernization.
Right.
You know, Council Sheldon met with community development monthly, bi-weekly. The other just thing to add to this conversation is that there is a call in our, I think it's policies, for a Quincy Farm committee. That was sort of dissolved during.
Discussions with the, with.
Yes, that kind of unfortunately just sort of fell apart in the whole kind of controversy over which way to go. And part of that challenge at the time was that that committee had started to go down a path with a, it was a master planning process. We had hired a master planning consultant. They were going down the path. And there was some disagreement within the committee about which way the direction would go. And tangents started appearing, none of which the council had any idea about. And so the, the work of the Quincy Farm committee was stopped at that point. And it was never resumed. The committee was never officially dissolved. It just sort of stopped.
Well, I think, having just recently read the minutes. I think there was a motion that they would dismiss the plan that they.
They would discontinue, they would stop work on the master plan. But the commit, I mean, so, so one way to go would be to revive the Quincy Farm committee. But I think the, it, it's clear from at least that point of view thinking, times have changed. But back then, Quincy Farm was very clearly its own thing, that had its own committee directing the work of Quincy Farm. And there was conversation back then about whether it should be part of Parks and Trails, but it wasn't. Council Helen?
A couple of questions, I guess, or observations. I wonder, Susan, if, back to the strategy, that the council really should be driving the strategy and getting that in place along with liaisons. I, I could live with what we're suggesting here. I do wonder, though, and not volunteering, if it might make sense to have someone who knows Quincy Farm really well, and maybe one of the newer council members who don't, for that perspective, because it has been controversial and, you know, bringing sort of a, a different perspective and learning along the way. And then I also just wonder what staff's, you know, view is on this.
So, so let me just, it's council's decision about whether or not you want to establish the new liaison position, and if so, who should fill that? With that said, I will just offer some practical thoughts. Over the years, there have been some other unofficial liaison positions for project-based things. Like the, for example, you know, we, when the cell tower thing first started, you know, Randy and Al attended numerous meetings with us. We had calls with cellphone companies. That was at an operational level. But it was a limited-term project, and they stepped in really because the, well, first of all, both of them had some background in the technology in ways that staff didn't. But also because I think they, they viewed that as a short-term process. This was not a forever thing like a department liaison. This is limited to this thing. I know the same thing happened with Dan and the cellphone project while I was gone as well. That has happened over the years on various things. I, I will say from a staff perspective, the unofficial part of that isn't great. I certainly would recommend to council that we, you know, either kind of have official, those kinds of positions be a little bit more official so that there's a clearer expectation for staff as it relates to council's expectations for us. Or that, you know, it's, it's, it's a little bit more black and white, as, as Council Maguire is suggesting. The unofficial part, while it is beneficial, the unofficial side of it does create some ambiguities sometimes. I do think we've had a mature group, and over the years, it hasn't really generated a lot of controversy. But it is, it, it could at some point.
Council Fisher?
Do the council people who are serving as liaisons have an opportunity to vote? Because if they voted on something, so the Quincy Farm committee, or the whatever committee, is deciding on, you know, something, and they take a vote, it is my opinion that probably the council person should not vote because they have an opportunity to vote when it comes to council.
Yeah, and I don't, this isn't a, this is more, I think of it more like a working group. So, yeah, and that's why we did away with council liaisons to boards and commissions.
Right, I read that. But then, I guess I would even take it a step further and say, you're really just there to listen.
There's a lot of larger communities that have their councils form subcommittees, working groups, that work, I would say, at a lower level than policy. We don't have those here, and I think the liaison program is effective, sort of Cherry Hills Village-sized version of that. So with that said, I do think that they are more involved than just listening. They are a key sounding, key opportunity to check in on.
And I think that that's, that's an important point, which is, and to give you a sense, Karen, about that is, and you're right, there is no voting, and there is no directing, and there is no telling. It is providing input with regard to thoughts and views about where you think council's coming from. And by the way, and, and the mayor indicated that, and that's an important point, which is, all of these liaisons are providing council's views, not the individuals' views. If Doug, is Doug over? No. If Doug were here, he'd sit back and say, well, Chris Kramer's here. When I meet on the budget, half of my things are going, you're going to get this question from Doug Robinson. I recommend you have a slide on that. You're going to get the question on this from Robbie, not from Earl Holland. You're going to get one from these people on that. And that's basically what everybody should be doing with regard to those liaison things. In this case, with regard to Quincy Farms, it is spending time, well, I mean, I can just tell you, like, as an example, I, I spent two hours with Ellen Thompson three weeks ago, just talking about stuff and giving her a view and a perspective of, you know, hey, what do you, how do you want to go forward with regard to getting that in front of council so council can have a discussion about that? An hour and a half today with Laura Crispin. I mean, there is, Quincy Farms discussion is a lot of time. Now, one could sit back and say, you know what? Get rid of it. Good. Get ready. Get ready. I think we're, I mean, because.
Nobody's suggesting that.
Okay, but it's a lot of time.
But, no, but I, I think one way to go about it would be to just have them come to council more often. And I think Earl's point when he said that is just that those are long discussions, and one way to do it would be to bring it all to council, and then we would have those discussions here.
Well, I think it's important because, I mean, for the 10 years that I was on PTRC and chaired part of it, it's, it's a little tricky to, I mean, it is a different animal by creation. I mean, the council created the Quincy Farm commit, uh, committee?
It's committee, yes.
And, you know, for better or for worse, I, I will tell you, my personal opinions were that that committee was created because there were some unique negotiations going on at the time. And there was, but frankly, if it boils down to it, was a little bit of a particular former mayor who looked for something to do that he could put his brand on. And frankly, that committee couldn't get out of its way to create even a master plan when it hired professional master plan capable people to do that. And there was, my whole time with Emily was a little bit of me not understanding that differences between them because I said, well, it's open space like all the other open space, the expertise on how to prune a tree, blah, 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 all those day-to-day things. I would tell you that my result of that is that there are many, many overlaps. But right now Quincy Farms is a area of important sort of, it's a kind of a open space on steroids in terms of all of the issues. I guess where I'm going on this is maybe we can meet in the middle on this and say, what if this liaison exists for a year or two years to try and resolve some of these things? And with a reevaluation later as to whether we still need that or whether it is settled into a working form that no longer, I mean, maybe we won't be under a threat of litigation. Maybe we won't be under the, you know, all these hot things that came up in the last couple of years. So I guess, I'm okay. I'm, I, let me be really strong. I do not want to reestablish the committee. I think that would be a disaster.
Can we modify maybe what you said by adding that we will, as quickly as possible, establish the strategy to give the liaison so the direction is from the council, not just the other way around? I think that's the important piece here. That, that if there's a strategy to be developed, we do it and do it quickly, then implement as suggested.
That's a great suggestion, and I do believe at Councilor Holland's suggestion, that was, sort of developing the vision was added to the work plan for this year. So I, I completely agree with you on that. So I think we've had, you know, some discussion. Yes, Council Robinson?
Just a comment. So as I considered coming on council, I interviewed, or interview is not the right word, but I talked with many of the constituents in District One. And along with cellphone coverage, this was the issue that they cared most about. And with the ballot initiative and the concern about it, I, as a council member now, want to do everything we can to get ahead of any issues that are going to come our way. And I see this, having a liaison, maybe it's a temporary thing, I think, but over the next year or two, the decisions are largely going to be made about how to, how that property is going to run for the next decade.
Man, I hope you're right. Yes, yes. But, yeah, no, I, yeah, I hope you're right.
And so anyways, I, I'm supportive of having more council involvement earlier on to get ahead of issues as they come.
Thank you for that. And then to address, you had, your first question was whether this was the appropriate process. You know, we, during this process, we have, every time we do it, we have, we've removed liaisons. We've added other ones. We've removed the boards and commissions. So I do feel that this is the appropriate mechanism, but.
I was just going to ask council, what's the?
City attorney?
What's the mechanism for modifying policies and procedures? Is there one?
Well, this is a little different. It's, I was just talking with City Clerk Gillespie about that. It's a program. It's not a policy. We typically use, like, we just redid the capital fund balance.
It's titled Policies and Procedures. Yeah. City of Cherry Hills Village Policies and Procedures adopted February 2006. Here, here's what I would like to see.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I, I wasn't prepared to have this discussion, so I'm catching up here.
This, it seems a little.
It's labeled a program.
And I, I know people have been talking about it, but what I would like to see is a recommendation from staff along with some parameters of what that position is going to be.
Well, I appreciate that, but I don't actually think that it's staff's, I don't believe that this part of the council's operation is at the direction of staff. I think that, that this is, falls within the purview of the function of council. And so I think, I don't think a staff recommendation about what liaisons should be is really appropriate, personally.
We, we have brought suggested liaisons or elimination of liaisons. When the opioid council settlement occurred, we recommended to council that that be added, which occurred then at this meeting, at the business meeting at the start of the year. But, yeah, we have never provided any recommendations for who should fill a seat.
Well, I'm not asking you to do that. But what I would like is some structure around what is that liaison role going to be? And then advice that this is the way policies and procedures are appropriately modified.
And we've been talking about, perhaps it makes sense to put this really into the, you know, formal resolution adopting a policy. As opposed, it's labeled policies, you're right. It's called a program. It's a little bit nebulous. It tends to be a little more, I guess, amenable to change with every two years as, as some of these liaisons are, are, what's the word? Or just time-sensitive, right? There's sometimes just hot button issues or the opioid that just arises from something new, external stimulus. So, you know, some nimbleness is good, but a resolution's easy to do, so maybe council wants to decide to do it that way. But that would be a process for adopting a change of the policy. Obviously, the discretion to appoint a liaison rests with council. And, and to define its scope, which currently in this program, it's minimal, but it does talk about what each liaison is expected to do. Meet, meet monthly, you know, look at budget, whatever, deal with the crier. So, yeah, I think.
Right, because it wouldn't fall under any of these liaison. It's not a liaison for a city department, for the village crier, for an outside agency.
Right, it's to me, in my mind, in my brief look at it tonight, it's most akin to the liaison for village crier in that it's its own sort of animal.
Right. So what is the preference of council?
I, I would prefer that we, next meeting, come back with a modification of this policy and procedure that outlines what the responsibilities of the liaison for Quincy Farm is. And then I think we have something substantive to vote on.
Okay.
And I'm not objecting to a liaison for Quincy Farm. My concern is really what that role is. Because I don't think it should be directing, here's what Quincy Farm should be doing. But, but I'm not opposed to, have you thought about this issue? Council's going to be concerned about that. I understand that. But I want to be clear here what it is.
Right, and I, and, and I basically agree with you, but just to put a finer point on it, I agree with what you said. So your concern is sort of pro forma, i.e., you want to just put that in writing, or are you a concern? Do you have a concern that that's what's been happening heretofore? Because those are two different things.
I don't know. I, I have no idea. I mean, I, I know you're very careful about working within your appropriate role. So, no, I don't, I'm not concerned about that. But I think we ought to be clear.
Yeah, no, that, I, I see that.
Because it is a different animal in the sense of it's an operating entity, right? And we're more like the board of the directors, and we don't want to be down operating as a CEO.
No, no, absolutely. And in fact, in fact, I'm, because I'm really sensitive to that. I've always been sensitive to boards of directors, school boards, et cetera. The point of contact was with the city manager, very, very sensitive. But one of the things that this council's always done is, when we've had, whether it's special projects, whatever it is, and by the way, I, I like that, that suggestion, and in my, my view, I've always thought, once Quincy Farms gets up to sort of equilibrium, is that one year? Is it two years? Is it five years? At some point in time, it will be.
Just maintenance.
It will be just parks, it'll, that'll change. It'll become the Parks Trails, Open Space and Quincy Farms Committee. I mean, it will change and it will roll in there because it makes sense. Because it, once it's at equilibrium, once it's at, that would make sense. So again, by definition, it is a finite type of role at that point. We just don't know what.
Just a suggestion, but I agree with you.
Okay, yeah, well, both of you, yeah, exactly. So, so I'm, I'm fine with that. It's just that, yeah, if we need to wait till the 21st, that's, you know, I won't argue with that.
So I've, I've heard a recommendation that we have a resolution at our next. So I've heard a recommendation that we have a resolution at our next meeting to change the city council liaison program to include a number, another one of these categories that is a liaison for Quincy Farm and that outlines similar to these other positions, outlines the responsibility, I would assume it's at a fairly high level, as is all of these. Is that sort of the consensus of the group? Are we? Council Robinson?
Yeah, it makes sense to me.
Okay. Is there a liaison we should run a draft scope by? I'm sorry. I think that makes sense. I think, you know, really, the the absence, like the vacuum of any either board or commission or council or any input into Quincy Farm right now is and the absence of the Quincy Farm Committee, it was created to provide a role, and that role is not being performed.
Right.
And that was what was needed to take the incremental steps forward that we needed to make, and we've made a lot of progress, but now we need to rein that in. Okay.
A couple of things, though. One is, because I wouldn't want to do anything, you know, that council, in full transparency, there's a meeting tomorrow that they want me to attend. Do you want me to attend it or not?
I would like you to attend it.
Yes, please.
It's a it's a it's a it's a it's a typical working meeting between land preserve and and staff and.
It's a it's a but it's in specifically in response to.
Right.
The continuation of the annual plan until the January 21st meeting, and tomorrow is a check in on the progress of specifically all the direction we receive from council about updating that plan.
And I can say from my perspective, where my if I was focusing on it, it would be looking at it and remembering all of the comments of my going, you know, you're going to get some comments from Susan if you don't change this section. That's what I'd be doing. And then I also turn around and go, and by the way, if you don't change this section, you're going to get a question from me. And I pose it that way. I tell them what I'm going to do in here, not in there. And that I think, I don't mean to go on, but that's I think that's important. That's a different type of a thing to sit there and go, I'm not telling you what to do. I'm telling you what I'm going to raise with my colleagues at this point in time, and this is how I'm going to do it. And by the way, you know, Rob Eber is going to raise this. He's going to come at it from this perspective. What can we do to bring that together? Staff has their views, land preserve has theirs, using this as an example. And it just sort of starts to push that process along a little bit. And if I can say, and by the way, the relationship has been great. I think I think everybody would agree that it's been a terrific relationship. I think I think sometimes staff needs, they need some council support in their discussions with the land preserve.
I'm not going to say don't go to the meeting, but what you're describing to me is your role. You should be the one in that meeting saying Earl Holland is going to have.
He is in that meeting.
Well.
Well, at least.
So if you're asking me, that's the CEO's role before a presentation to the board. But I'm not going to say don't go to the meeting. I think we that's what I think we need to define. Yeah, you wouldn't you wouldn't have a work, maybe they wouldn't, you know. I'm okay with you going.
And the example that I would use, and we all sort of heard the dialogue about this, the land preserve years ago presented a plan that said, tear down the main house, that had zero support from council. There was that is not the city manager's job to say, whoa, whoa, I'm not sure that the council is going to be on board with that, because the city manager's not on council. So I think it's the council's job to say, to provide that direction and say, you're welcome to come present whatever you'd like, but I don't know that that you're going to find support for that idea. I think that's the council's job.
For just for the I'm not speaking in favor of or against either direction here. I do want to clarify, the city manager absolutely told them that that would not find support. I no, Joe, I'm I can't stress that enough.
Yes.
What they chose to do with that information is a different story, but I trust me that that was passed along.
But I guess the point is that this is where I was referring to think path, people go down paths without getting support from the council first. And we run into this in other ways, too. We run into it with planning and zoning. We run into it with the master plan where they go down a path, they present something to council, and at council, you know, is is not doesn't support that. And that's the job of council, it's the role, that's the way the process works. But it's just a shame that it took six months of hard work on everybody's part to get there.
Still feels backwards to me, whether you keep a house or not, or renovate it or tear it down, is a strategic decision.
Yes.
About the asset that ought to be coming from council as direction and not the other way around. So I know I keep saying the same thing, but but to me, that's that's the answer to this, and we can have liaisons, too.
Yes, and you're I absolutely agree with you, and that was the Quincy Farm Committee was tasked. The council doesn't work at that generally work at that level to have master planning sessions, and even with the city's master plan, the Planning and Zoning Commission does that. So that was exactly the path that the city was on when the Quincy Farm Committee was tasked with coming up with a master plan for Quincy Farm, and we hired the consultant and went down that path. And it just went a little too far, it got derailed. It went a little too far down the path before, and there were a lot of fact, but anyway.
Yeah.
You know, so that I think is the the place where having a council liaison to just try to keep the process on a specific track or within the track, right, that it needs to move. But I completely agree. We need to have that vision first, and then that drives everything else. Okay.
Before you go on, and I raised this actually two years ago when we did this, you know, the policy, and since we're going to be amending the policy anyway, I talked last time about things that are in this policy that don't happen. And we talked about it, and I think at the time, somebody suggested we bring it up, we take it up at the at the retreat, which I don't think we did at that time. You know, this, since we're going to be amending the policy anyway, this would be a great time to then look at this and decide if these are things that we actually want our liaisons to be doing.
If that's the case, and that that sounds great, I'm not sure the packet for the 21st is literally like next week.
Yeah.
And so to update the policy overall, I if we want to do that now, we certainly can. I would just offer to you, it's not going to happen January 21st.
I that that's fine, we don't have to, we don't have to.
No, we.
But at some point, we need to.
No, and we can do that now, I guess, is what I'm suggesting to you. We just won't be able to schedule the next conversation on January 21st. That's all I mean.
Well, was there anything in particular, is I mean, were there a lot of changes or that you?
I don't know, I mean, I just, but you know, and again, it's not different than what I brought up last time. I mean, I sat back and I go, you know, for instance, each city board, commission and committee prepare an annual work plan to be reviewed and approved by the city council. That doesn't happen, and it's in this policy.
Yeah.
Well, but I asked about it two years ago. I mean, when you called, and I said, and you guys know how I am about that, I'm like going, I have no problem, I have no problem with that if we want to do it. It's in here. Then let's do it. If we're not going to do it, get it out of there. I don't like having ordinances or regs that we just go, yeah, this one we're going to enforce, and this one we're not gonna.
Okay, so maybe could we then?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The only thing that happens in there is that we do have something on the agenda each week, and there's never.
We do, that's the that's like number two.
And we actually do do that.
To provide the periodic report. So I maybe can we also then add for that meeting next week or in two weeks, a discussion of whether we want to keep item one or not? And it's just a brief discussion, to your point, Earl, that do we want them to prepare an annual work plan and present it to us or not? And if we do, then.
Well, and also four, yeah, four, which is, you know, and it's that regular, I mean, we have had presentations, but they aren't regular, they are actually very rare, but they happen every now and again. They'll come and make a presentation, but they're not regular. And this basically.
We don't do joint sessions, yeah.
Yeah, there haven't been in the last two years. I mean, I think at one point in time, Parks and Trails, I think at one point made a presentation when I was on council the first time. Like I say, it is incredibly rare. It's not regular, is the point. And so we just have to decide, is that we want to start doing that or not? My guess is is we're not, because we're not going to want to put that burden on our volunteers of our Parks Trail, of our commissions and boards.
Yeah.
So we're not going to do it. But I don't know what everybody thinks.
Well, I think let's just.
And then two, as you pointed out, Susan, as well, I mean, you know, we don't, we don't get that either.
They do, I mean, that's just a matter of saying to our commission members, you know, when historical context, we had the liaisons, there was a city council liaison to every board and commission, and that got onerous for several reasons. So we, the primary one being that city council person's presence just had too much influence over the conversation in the meeting. And so we decided to do away with those, and the alternative, what we put in place to maintain that communication was rather than the council member going to all these meetings, additional meetings, they should come to our meeting. And I was chair of Parks Trails and Recreation Commission at the time, and we had a sign up for our members for every council meeting. Somebody was assigned to come and say, or it was actually just once a month, but somebody was assigned to come once a month and say, here's what P T R C is working on. And then that just, you know, it just dwindles off or whatever. If we want that to happen again, I think that's just a matter of going to those chairs and saying, start coming to our meetings. But I think that is it, since we're not actually proposing any specific changes, can we just add discussions of these items to that to the on the 21st? We'll discuss.
To discuss it and then for a future.
And yeah, and well, we can just decide right then and there, do we want to keep it or not?
Yes, I think we can do that.
Okay, so let's do that. Okay.
Yes, in addition to both resolution and the discussion of the best.
Yes, primarily section four B.
Right.
Okay, moving on then to resolution four, series 2025, appointing an alternate member to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. The Board of Adjustment and Appeals is a it's a standalone organization, a standalone group within the city that handles primarily people who want exceptions or variances to city code. And the generally speaking, there are very specific criteria for what qualifies for a variance, and they're almost impossible to meet, almost. The board, as a result, and we've really improved over time, the Board of Adjustment and Appeals hasn't met in at least three years, because our staff has done a really great job of working with people. This was not always the case. When when I started, we used to get people coming in asking for variances and just having to be told no all the time. Earl always said it's the worst job because you just have to tell your neighbors no. But it has been very inactive, and there have not been requests for variances, because our staff has been very great at explaining to our residents the the hurdle that you have to meet, you know, the threshold you have to meet in order to qualify. So this isn't expected to be a very time consuming appointment. The council member to the BOAA does not vote unless someone is needed for a quorum. So it's, and I think it's we require it in the charter, the code, the charter.
I think it's in the code.
Okay.
But it's in effect an alternate.
Yes.
The way it's worded, it's not worded as an alternate, but what ends up happening is you're only there as an alternate, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so yes, Councilor Fisher.
So I had a question exactly about that for two things on here. The first one, I would say to serve as an alternate member of the board would indicate that you're a full man, a full voting member if you are serving as an alternate. So then again, this would technically probably have to be in a different category on that chart, right?
It's not on that.
Yeah, it's not on the chart, but yeah.
Okay, but then my other question was, and maybe I'm just reading this wrong, maybe it says everybody else serves for terms of three years, but we're saying this term is only going to be two years on the same thing. So the very first whereas is that these people on this board are appointed for terms of three years. We're we're appointing council or blank to serve.
And I think the thinking there is because there are new council people every two years, so at this business meeting, there's an opportunity for a reassignment of this position. So yes, the term for the council alternate is different in duration than the citizen appointed volunteers.
That's what I that's how I sort of assumed.
Yes.
How I assumed it, what I assumed it meant, but I'm not sure it's very clear.
So maybe we could just strike some words from, maybe those words in the rare whereas aren't particularly relevant.
Which sort of goes back to the previous thing, one of the first things is does say that that we serve as liaisons for two years.
Yeah, so this, and this is slightly different because it says that we make from time to time, so.
I understand, but if we're going to discuss.
And and this, the BOAA appointment is not included as part of the liaison program, so it is a completely different thing, which is why it's its own agenda item as well. But I think you make a great point that it's not really relevant to the council's appointment of an alternate, that the Board of Adjustment and Appeals members' terms are three years. So maybe just leaving it at whereas section eight point two of the City of Cherry Hills Village Home Rule Charter requires that members of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals be appointed by city council. What the requirements for all those other people are irrelevant here.
It is merely pursuant to section 16, 730, right, that council may from time to time. So, right, so maybe all you need is.
Strike the whole first whereas.
All you need is the second.
Okay.
And third whereas.
Yeah, okay. So strike the whole first whereas and just say, yes.
So should it say serve as an alternate member of the board? Or are you a full member of the board?
Yeah.
It's the alternate member.
Yes.
But yes.
That's the third whereas, and that is in the actual body of the.
Yeah, whereas, yes.
Yes, yeah.
And then my recommendation was to appoint Counselor McGuire simply because on the assumption that she would be appointed as the community development liaison, because the a lot of the criteria for a potential variance are it's very code specific and code driven. So that was my recommendation. It's also, unfortunately, like I said, it's not a it's not a particularly fun job, because when people have gotten to that point, it's not great. But so if there's any questions or discussions, then I'd entertain a motion. And the recommended motion is on the back of the staff memo if anyone wants to. And you would add that we're going to amend the resolution by deleting the first whereas clause. Anybody want to give it a try? Council Robinson.
Sure, I'll give it a try, okay. I move to approve resolution four, series 2025, resolution of the city council of the City of Cherry Hills Village, appointing Susan McGuire as the alternate member to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
And to amend the resolution.
And to amend the resolution, deleting the first whereas clause.
There's a motion, is there a second? There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any? Any opposed? Great. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Resolution five, series 2025, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Arapahoe regarding 2024 grant of Arapahoe County Open Space Program Funds for Highline Canal stewardship projects for trail resurfacing in Cherry Hills Village. Manager Black.
Good evening. I'm so sorry for the title.
Thank you for re- that.
Um, so some background about this project. The last time that we resurfaced the Highline Canal in our section was back in 2016. We do have one of the most heavily visited sections. Depending on the mile, it's, it's over 100,000 annual visits a year. So as you can see from this photo, the surfacing has begun to wear away in spots, which exposes the dirt underneath. Then it sort of turns into a mud pit in the section that that's happening. And we have to go out and our crews smooth that out. But it becomes a lot more labor-intensive over time as more of that dirt gets exposed. So we had been seeing this happen, planning on a resurfacing project in 2025. And while we were in the early planning stages anticipating that, Arapahoe County Open Space announced that they were having a special grant cycle last year, specific to the Highline Canal. So it was perfect. We applied for one of those grants, and we found out on December 5th that that grant has been fully funded for this year. So our total estimated project cost is $55,233.97. And our grant award was almost $50,000. So we put about a 10% cash match in there that the city will be responsible for. So we will be completing that resurfacing this summer with our Parks and Streets crews. And we plan to complete the project in section so that the impact to trail users will be as minimal as possible. And especially, that's one of the benefits of doing it ourselves in-house. We know exactly when we'll be out there. We'll be able to communicate really easily to residents, you know, what sections are closed, what the detours look like. And with all our bridle trails, we're able to route people pretty successfully throughout just other trails and back onto the Highline when we do have to close those sections. I'm happy to answer any questions about the project, and otherwise, there's a recommended motion on the screen.
Thank you. Great job with a lot of grants.
Thank you.
Yeah, derivative job on the grants.
Yeah, this year. So congratulations for that. Any questions for Manager Black?
No, I just want to go again, thank Emily for all the grant applications and the success with which you seem to keep getting more and more and more. So thank you.
Derivative.
I move to approve resolution-
Now, hang on.
Okay.
I do have some questions. And they're not for you. I think it's pretty selfish, obligatory, what's going on. And I apologize in advance, Kathy. I just didn't have time. These things would be cleared up if, I probably would have called you directly, but I couldn't. I just didn't have a chance. On the intergovernmental agreement, now this is a reimbursement grant, you know, and again, some of this is picky, but I just want to go through it. One of the things says is that the grant further agrees that after receipt of the grant funds, the grantee will use any interest earned on the grant funds only for the grant project. We won't be doing that. Now, it's one and the same. We say, well, you owe us the money. We got it. So we really aren't earning any interest. But I'm just pointing that out that, that's something that you might want to think about.
Are you saying that that's superfluous provision, or?
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not concerned about, I'm just, I'm just pointing it out here at this point.
Going back and forth with the accounting on the form.
Number seven, I actually do have a concern about.
All right.
Because this, because this is over the entire trail, correct? We're going to do the entire trail.
Within our city, yes.
Yes. The grantee acknowledges that the county has owner of the subject property. They are owner of the entire subject property. Cherry Hills Village owns the trail and the canal between Quincy Farms.
Yes. That is true.
And that actually, I mean, and again, they know that too. Nobody, but, you know, we shouldn't, we should be signing agreements that at the end of the day reflect, you know, accuracy, right?
I understand. The, the point of this paragraph is that the grantee is required to submit plans for the grant project and receive approval before the grant project may proceed.
I agree.
And that remains the same obligation with or without that carve-out, right, which I acknowledged as of this. And I certainly considered that in reviewing this.
So, um-
They're, they're owner of the bulk of the subject property. Yeah.
Right. Number 10, the grantee agrees to erect and permanently maintain at least one county sign and public recognition of the grant. So in other words, is that permanent? I mean, in other words, while the work's going on, is there, but I mean, after that, it's still going to be there?
Yes, it's a permanent sign. And we do have those throughout the city and other locations.
Okay. All right. So you're good with that. And then 15, the grantee agrees to assume responsibility for continuous maintenance and public, of the trails, and signage funded, blah, blah, blah. So the point is by doing this, we're agreeing, which we do anyway, but I mean, is, it's an obligation that we're contractually taking on as a result of this grant that we didn't have before.
No. We, Kathy and I discussed this specifically going through the I G I. It is the city's responsibility right now to maintain the trail surfacing. It has been for years since we took over from South Suburban. And so this isn't creating any new obligation.
Because we did that through-
Okay. Because we have, we have the obligation currently.
Ready.
Correct.
When, when it was with Denver Water, right, we had a, a rec lease, in essence, right, that obligated us for maintenance responsibilities.
That's still in effect with Arapahoe County.
Yep.
And in addition, I'll note that this particular obligation extends to the, whatever is funded by the grant and is time-bound for the natural life of that, which is set forth in the application, which is an attachment or exhibit to this agreement. So it's more delimited than it appears on its face. And in addition to not being a new obligation.
Okay. That's fine. I got the answers to my questions and-
Okay. Councilor Eber.
I move to-
Oh, wait. I'm sorry. I just have one small question. I know the answer to, but I just want to confirm. Obviously, before work starts, like several days or some number of days before work starts on a particular section, where you're going to have to put people on a detour, you're going to have signage up more than just a day in advance, or?
Um, we tend to put signage on site when we start the work. We do outreach through our social media, through email blasts. And we also notify the Highline Canal Conservancy ahead of time, and they put it out on their social media, and they have a trail closure section on the website. And then while the work's going on, we have signage in place at that section that shows folks what the detour is.
Which will show the detour.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Councilor Robinson.
Related to this, what is the process? There are other trails in the village that also have same sort of surfacing issues that we're seeing here on the canal. How often do you evaluate those? And what is the process for potentially remedying those situations? I, I'm just speaking specifically, I guess, the one that I've noticed recently is in Woody Hollow Park.
Um, we evaluate them on an annual basis. For the bridle trails, we'll go in and fill those in, like the grass trails where they get rutted. Those we fill in every year. For Woody Hollow, I'm not, I can't remember offhand the last time we've resurfaced in Woody Hollow, but that's something that we can check on this spring with our crews.
Any other questions? Okay. Councilor Eber.
I move to approve resolution five, series 2025, an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Arapahoe regarding the 2024 grant of Arapahoe County Open Space Program Funds for Highline Canal stewardship projects for trail resurfacing in Cherry Hills Village.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Resolution six, series 2025, accepting an anonymous donation from two Cherry Hills Village families on behalf of the Cherry Hills Village Police Department Chief Lyons.
Good evening. This is always such a cool thing to, to ask for, but in front of you this evening is a, is a resolution to accept two different donations, both from Cherry Hills Village families, one for $5,000 and one for $20,000. Naturally, both of these donations were unanticipated and unsolicited. But nonetheless, it is shocking to me still to this day how generous residents are of Cherry Hills Village, and that they, when they have a choice of who they like to donate money to, they choose their police department. As we typically do, this money will be used to offset some of the burden on the general fund or out of the police department's budget, generally toward equipment or technology, whatever's deemed to be the greatest need for us at the time. So before you is the motion to accept said resolution. And naturally, I'll come before council, before that money is spent, to update you on what that acquisition was. Thank you.
Thank you. And you might be asking yourself why we have to vote to accept generous donations like this. And of course, it's because there can't be any strings attached or any, anything that's contrary to the direction of the city. So it all needs city council's approval. We approved earlier, I think there was a bench, right? Or is that, anyway. Okay.
Question?
Yes.
Um, anonymous donations. While we may not necessarily need to disclose those to the public, I am concerned about the concept of council not understanding from whom we are receiving donations. And I'm wondering if it's sort of a breach of our responsibility to not know from whom we are receiving donations. And I know that we've talked about in the past that these type of donations ordinarily would go through the police foundation. And if the foundation wants to do something anonymously, I guess that's up to the foundation. But I am not overly comfortable with the concept that council approves an anonymous donation like this.
I can certainly weigh in on that. They're, they're not anonymous to me. They're anonymous that they don't want public recognition. So if you'd like to chat offline, I'm happy to share that with you. But they're, the, the conversation is around, they don't want in public notice their neighbors to know they wrote me a $20,000 check. The, and the other part is, most of our, as you know, most of our donations come through the foundation. However, occasionally throughout the year, someone will come by, as these two did, with a check already written to the police department. I'm certainly not going to turn them away and ask them to rewrite a $20,000 check. The other thing, I guess, perhaps worth noting for the new council members is in the, the 2025 budget, as was in the 2024 budget approved by council, we actually front-load a line item in our, in the police department's budget for donations, knowing or anticipating that we're expecting some throughout the year. And that line item only gets spent down when there is a donation to replenish the general fund. So, just for context.
I actually was going to make the same comment. I have, I have some discomfort not knowing where the money's coming from. And I was going to suggest a couple of options. You know, maybe I feel better if a small group of people know it, like the city manager knows it, the city attorney, and the mayor knows it. Or I worry about it, is there a way to distribute the information to all of us without it becoming a part of the public record? Or is it a part of the public record as soon as we cash the check?
Yeah, it's going to be a part of the public record. So if somebody did an open records request, I'm not trying to give anybody a playbook here, but if somebody were to do an open records request, it doesn't matter whether we told a small group or not, we would be obligated to provide that information. I don't think that was the intent of the anonymous part of this, though, but-
Right. And, and so maybe it's something that when someone comes in, we can say, from an ethical standpoint, we do need to inform council, but we will not publish unless somehow required by law. I mean, I would love to find a soft way to say that, because the last thing you want to do is offend, is offend somebody, right?
I, I don't see why we could not share that individually offline with you-
Okay.
-tonight. So.
And I assume that as part of any donation that's made, whether it goes through the police foundation, or frankly, the arts program, or anybody else, that there is some method of, of expressing appreciation with an understanding, I think it's in the formal documentation, even on the, on the Quincy Farm documents, that there is no expectation of, of receipt of any kind of preferential treatment at any time as a result of having given the present. And, and I know that, I think we've talked about that before, that there's always that, that we couldn't give it, I think legally, we talked about this a while back, that any gift never can have an expectation. But I, I'm trying to recall that conversation.
Probably in the context of your ethics code, right? But I don't know that we've talked about it in the context of these donations. If so, I don't recall. But, yeah, and there's no constraints on that in your charter, which, this is a very perfunctory provision in your charter.
Yeah. I think the discussion was whether we could return a donation if there were some ethical concern. And you said there's nothing that ever prevents us from not, from being able to-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's very broad authority.
With respect to the barn.
And the staff memo does say that it's important to recognize the department has not received any favors or offered any favors in exchange for this gift. So we have on our police chief's word and recommendation that this donation is above board. So-
Well, and my comfort level was the fact that the police chief knows who this person is, and it didn't literally land as a blank money order on his, on his desk.
He found it on the doorstep as he walked in.
That, that makes me comfortable.
They put it under his windshield wiper.
That we're okay in that. I just wanted to express my concern over truly anonymous gifts. You know, if, if a bunch of hundred-dollar bills ended up on the, on the, on the county.
And if it were just to be clear, if it were a blank check, it'd be made out to Jason Lyons. The, I want to acknowledge the optic that the, the term anonymous seems sort of scrupulous. And, and really, the conversation with general counsel was around either naming them in the resolution or not. And they chose not to be named in the resolution. And anonymous was the only word that best described the donation as opposed to naming their family.
They really just don't want it publicized.
That's exactly. The checks are personal checks in their name.
Right.
So there is, there's nothing below.
I was just going to offer as a liaison with the chief. That might be something I can talk to him about, go forward if these things come up.
Oh, that's a great idea. It's a great suggestion.
Yeah. And thank you, chief. I did suggest the word anonymous, thinking, well, I would explain something rather than-
I move to approve resolution six, series 2025, accepting an anonymous donation from two Cherry Hills Village families on behalf of the Cherry Hills Village Police Department.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay. We are going to move on to the next section of this meeting. For the benefit of our new council members, Cherry Hills Village currently has two general improvement districts, which are basically, I think you guys have experience with this, but they're groups of citizens who've gotten together to form their own taxing district, to tax themselves to do something. In both cases, these were used for undergrounding of utilities in their neighborhoods. When general improvement district, because the average person doesn't have taxing authority, they need the assistance of the city to use our taxing authority to, on their behalf, basically. So what we're going to do now is by virtue of your position as a city council member, you serve as a board member of these two general improvement districts. So this is not, we're, we're sort of setting aside our council member role, and you're now a board member of these improvement districts. And one key difference is that I am also a board member. I am the chair. And in this case, I do vote. I actually get to vote. So at 9:08, I'm going to recess the city council meeting and convene the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village, Charlie Park, Third Filing General Improvement District Board. Will the clerk please call the roll? Board Member Heller. Board Member Eber.
Here.
Board Member Holan.
Here.
Chair Brown.
Here.
Board Member McGuire.
Happy to be here.
Board Member Robinson.
Here.
Board Member Fisher.
Here.
Um, we have basically the consent agenda, which is approving, so we do the budgeting process for the general improvement districts. We did that back in December. And so these, the consent agenda is approving the minutes and going through the, just sort of very administrative process of public notices and budget calendar.
Should, should we take the minutes out of the consent agenda because three of the members weren't there and can't, can't vote on that? Or do they just abstain?
Why don't we have the reset button on the whole?
Do you want to speak? I mean, I, I, we don't need to do that.
Okay.
Under any construction of this board or council or-
In the past, we've done that, and I think it turned into sort of a habitual action. After further review.
Yeah.
Um, we, we do not need to necessarily operate in that same way. So, we don't, we don't need to-
Yes, that is a good question.
If you have an amendment, other than, you know, I wasn't-
If you have an amendment, that, other than, you know, I wasn't there and the, but it's merely a reflection of what happened, and you've got the buy-in of a lot of people that were there. And so, yes.
Thank you. Those of us who are there will vouch for the fact that this is what happened. Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move approval of consent agenda items 20A, B, and C.
Second. It's motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. I now adjourn the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village, Charlestown Park, Third Filing General Improvement District Board at 9:11 PM. And I call to order the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village, Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District Board at 9:11 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Board Member Heller. Board Member Eber.
Here.
Board Member Holan.
Here.
Chair Brown.
Here.
Board Member McGuire.
Happy to be here.
Board Member Robinson.
Here.
Board Member Fisher.
Here.
Um, same consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion.
Uh, I move to approve consent agenda items 27A, B, and C.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. I hereby adjourn the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village, Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District Board at 9:11 PM. A one-minute meeting. That's impressive.
Mayor, just a question. How often does this board meet?
Now, it meets, um, about three times a year in, twice in the December, like November, December timeframe to like present the budget, then to approve the budget, and then we approve the minutes, and now we're done. So I think maybe one other time something came up, but.
We'll bring back the minutes from this meeting of you guys approving the resolutions.
The resolutions, but then we're done.
Then we're done until November.
We don't just keep approving the minutes of approving the minutes. Um, okay. So then the, usually the final step in our city council meeting is an opportunity for the mayor and council members to provide reports, and then also our city staff. Um, so the mayor's report, I will start by just saying again, thank you so much to our three departing members, Counselor Sheldon, Counselor Blum, and Mayor Pro Tim Wiel. You will be greatly missed. Also, a very, very warm welcome to Counselor Fisher, um, Counselor Robinson, and Counselor Heller. It's going to be a great team, and I'm really looking forward to it. Um, I did want to share the news of, um, the passing of our neighbor, Mr. Fred Abrams. He was, um, a pillar of this community, a regular, he, he and his wife Alice were regular attendees at city council meetings. We could always count on them to be our audience and to show their concern and support for the community. Um, they attended regularly until, um, Fred's health made that not as possible. And our heart, the heart of our entire community goes out to the Abrams family. Um, what an enormous loss. If you didn't have the privilege of knowing the Abrams, they live, um, practically right next door in the house, right down the street here. Um, and I will reserve any further comments. Welcome the new year and looking forward to it. And then we start with members of city council, and I'll start down here. Counselor Heller, if you don't have anything to report, um, you can just say no report, but I know that you do have something you wanted to share.
Just one item, um, to make council aware of. It's, my understanding probably needs to be validated that, uh, South Metro, um, has a, uh, purported significant budget forecast, uh, under run, or I'm sorry, overrun over the next several years, and will be looking for the potential of a, uh, mill levy, levy election in November. Um, the alternative to this apparently is, uh, cutting staffing and possibly, um, firehouse impacts. So I think it's something that we, um, should be aware of and make sure that we have some input on. Um, and I, I guess that's really just an awareness item.
Yeah. Thank you for the heads up.
Thank you.
Counselor Eber.
Uh, no report other than the fact that my column for the Crier is due next Wednesday. And if anybody has any particular topics that they want me to include, please email me ASAP.
So also, in case you didn't know, we, um, we changed the mayor's column that now the mayor writes six articles for the Crier throughout the year, and then each council member writes one. And so we'll work with you on assigning those.
And don't worry, we, we put you all at the back of the year. So you have time.
But generally, the, um, article is due about a month before the issue goes out. So midway through the, you know, mid of, middle of January for the February issue. Counselor Holan.
Um, and I have no report as well, other than just to echo your comments. Um, I appreciated, um, our former colleagues' participation in, in council, and I welcome our new members. And, um, that's it.
Counselor McGuire.
Um, a constituent of mine who attends Brave Academy, uh, was visiting with me, and, um, we had talked about the site plan amendment, and he said, you know, the weirdest thing happened when we came out of church. And this was, I believe it was after the site plan amendment was approved, but before the end of the year. Uh, he said, you come out on, I guess you come out on Jefferson, and then you can bend to the right and exit on Hamden. But if you go straight on Jefferson, that goes into the neighborhood, if I'm recalling that correctly. He said, well, there was a woman sitting in a driveway with, um, in a lawn chair and a man standing in the middle of the street with what looked like a big stick and a big dog on a leash. And I thought, oh, that's just so disappointing. Um, but, um, and I know I, I shared that with you, and I didn't know if you had a chance to share it with the chief, but it was after one of the Sunday services. So I just, I don't know if we can have someone who's keeping an eye on that. And, you know, hopefully that was just, uh, someone really angry over what happened on, um, the 11th when we approved that. But it's concerning and it's disappointing that, that people would, I mean, it's a public road, even though Brave does have signs saying, don't go this way. Um, people have a right to go that way. But it was just concerning to me that someone would be doing that. So.
You're saying that's somebody who was a resident of the, or in the Covington neighborhood, whether they were a resident or not?
Someone who was a resident of the Covington neighborhood.
Okay.
That was his impression, because it was somebody blocking the entrance into the, standing in the middle of the street at the entrance to the Covington neighborhood. So.
The chief, we often have off-duty officers working that site at that day or at that time. So it, it would be, it would be surprising if we didn't know about it.
Certainly keep an eye on it either way. It's, you're talking about Sunday services, generally speaking.
Counselor Robinson.
Uh, no report, but just wanted to say, uh, excited to be here, uh, big shoes to fill, and be patient. Uh, but thrilled to be, uh, part of the team. Thank you.
And Counselor Fisher.
No report.
City manager.
No report, but directors may have reports or managers.
I have no report.
No report. Jay, because I, on your report, I think it was part of your report. And I don't remember ever seeing this before, but maybe I just, I just missed it. I mean, right at the end, the CHV code enforcement right-of-way log for November. Um, I, I actually enjoyed seeing that, but it raises that whole issue of going, okay, so we do go out there and deal with people that are violating right-of-way issues. But it goes to that other issue in terms of, again, code enforcement, which is what this is. Our residents doing it, our residents blocking it as opposed to, I mean, because this is kind of like industrial stuff that you've got going on in the right-of-way, right? I mean, that's what you're reporting as opposed to, uh, our residents violating the code.
They are out looking for, whether it's construction sites or residents. So we've had that report in there since our last retreat when we talked about.
Okay, I apologize. I missed it.
And so, um, if they do catch residents doing that, not just construction sites, you will see that on that report. Um, so, yes, the, the answer to your question is they are looking for anybody, whether it's a individual resident or a new construction or remodel or landscaping work. Um, they are looking for anybody putting anything in the right of way.
Really?
Yes.
It's, it's my understanding.
It's pretty, it's pretty obvious when, I mean, it's, I mean, obviously, your guys are driving around, because this says that they are, and they see it, and they go, hey, there's a, guy's got a sign in there, guy's got a, uh, you know, roller, roll-off in there, whatever. And then you go by and you go, look at all those rocks going right up to the street.
Well, and again, i- if it's rocks that you can park on, it's allowed. You're allowed to landscape in the right. If it's a big rock blocking, and you think it's new, but they haven't noticed it, give us a call. We, we will go out and investigate. We'll look at photographs. We'll look, you know, we'll, we'll go back with Arapa map and Google Maps and see how long has that rock been there.
Okay. All right. Good. That's good to know.
Thanks, chief.
Uh, just one quick update. This week, uh, we posted the, um, advertisement within our organization for the second canine handler. Um, that will be posted for a few weeks and then testing around the first week of February. If and when we identify someone capable of performing that duty, and I strongly sus- suspect we will, um, then we'll fulfill, um, our, the, uh, the promise that we would have seven-day-a-week canine coverage. That, um, dog would be purchased by donation again. Uh, that donation's already been provided to the foundation in principle for this year. Um, and then we should be able to get that dog on the street by early summer, thereby having seven-night-a-week coverage with, uh, that canine capability. So I'm pretty excited about that. Thank you.
Thanks. No problem.
Just want to make sure everyone has on their calendars that the council retreat will be, uh, Tuesday, March 4th during the day. We usually start about 9:00 AM, and that's in addition to the regular meeting that evening.
Yes. Not exactly much of a retreat anymore, but.
It's a retreat from the dais down to the floor.
I guess back in the day, they used to go out of town. Then we used to go like to Glenmore, and then now we just do it here. But that's okay. But we still have our meeting that night, right?
Right.
Yes.
Uh, only update for me is that the, um, 25, uh, state legislative session starts tomorrow. Uh, we are anticipating more land use legislation this year, specifically related to housing. Uh, we'll see what form and fashion that takes in 2025, but the session does kick off tomorrow.
Yay.
Yay. No report.
All right. Well, um, if there's nothing else.
Move to adjourn.
So moved at 9:23.
Yes, exactly. All right. It's the first meeting. Good deal.
Congratulations.